The next council meeting will begin at 5:30 on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. The meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Sekora Ludwig.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a 48-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on October 12th, 2021, as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing the telephonic conferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the 48-hour notice. During the portions of the meetings that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment periods, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name and called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistants accessing the call-in number should call City Hall at 732-745-5007.
Kindly join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Please join me now in a moment of silence to reflect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers who dedicate their lives to protect our freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them safely in their duties. Thank you. Is there a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 18.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yeah, sorry.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludwig.
Yes. Madam Clerk, has the correspondence received by the city clerk's office been forwarded to the proper department?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. Um, ordinances for discussion on second reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20 Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons, at 10 Curtis Place and 172 Jones Avenue. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in 0704 will need to dial *6 to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L, M through P, Q through T, and letters U through Z. As a reminder, please dial *6 to unmute yourself if need be. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council on this ordinance? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. Madam President, we have no members of the public on the list.
Thank you. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Good pick. Which one you want?
Thank you.
You. It was you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8 Health and Safety, Chapter 8.40, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, Section 8.40.060, Littering. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in 0704 will need to dial *6 to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T, and letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council?
We have public one and two.
This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance.
Council President, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay, Madam President. The first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cradaville. Can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Good evening, Council President. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, uh, Second Ward, New Brunswick Today editor. I was just hoping somebody could give me a little bit of a summary or an explanation of what the revisions are to this, uh, littering ordinance and what prompted the changes.
From, from what I understand, this ordinance, uh, allows the city to now ticket the actual litterer and if someone, um, litters on right-of-way and it gives us the ability to, for ticket for that. It doesn't negate any of the homeowner responsibilities or issuances that we have on the books. But, Mr. Shami, if you'd like to elaborate on that a little bit?
Uh, yes, Madam Council President, I, I can do so. Um, first off, the, uh, the ordinance amends the fines for the subsection, um, C, which, uh, used to read $65 for a first offense. And that is being, uh, proposed to go to $100 for a first offense for the, uh, the littering section. Um, what the ordinance also does is proposes a new subsection D, which covers, uh, for lack of a better term, illegal dumping, um, volumes of garbage that, um, unfortunately, the city has experienced being dumped in roadways and alleyways and, uh, in places, uh, throughout the city. Um, and those particular, um, violations have a graduated, uh, penalty schedule. A thousand dollars minimum for the first, 2,500 for the second, and 5,000 for a third offense. So, it, uh, it beefs up our ordinance for enforcement purposes with respect to, um, garbage, uh, that's dumped in a large volume, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Shami. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cradaville?
Yes, it does. That's all for this, uh, item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Moore. Can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Good evening. Danielle Moore, M-O-O-R-E, Somerset Street. Uh, my, my question is, if you're able to understand why I'm asking you this first, due to where, by this order, you cannot go he say, she say, this person did this. Now, you understand what I'm trying to ask you? I know the city had put in an ordinance, passed an ordinance on video cameras to catch people and, and put, put up in certain areas to catch people with dumping the garbage. Has the city put the cameras up to start catching people?
I'm not aware of that. Uh, Mr. Shami, do you have any, um, knowledge of that?
Um, Madam Council President, I will say that the, uh, the city is, is, uh, taking action in, in that regard. I wouldn't, uh, get liberty to discuss the exact locations, um, uh, as to where they are. Obviously, they're used for surveillance and apprehension purposes, um, to enforce the ordinance. Um, but, uh, I would have to say, yes, that the city is, uh, moving in that direction for purposes of, uh, enforcement.
Okay, I wasn't asking where, I, I wasn't asking where did you put them in law. I'm just making sure that the cameras are up due to where, obviously, you're gonna put them where you're having the situation where people dump, the main two places that you're dumping, that's Delavan Street and over by Sears, which I surely hope the cameras that was purchased were put up to start catching these people. And due to where, I say, I hope the city goes and buys more cameras 'cause it was, it was a very, I, I, I say, I, I, I wanna use the correct word, but I don't know why this city even put out 30 new garbage bins for people to continue bringing their garbage, dumping over here in New Brunswick due to, I'm not gonna say it's Franklin up a stairway, but due to where you pay a fee of your garbage. Yes, a lot of those residents, due to where I do see and know, are bringing their garbage over here. So, like I said, how are you really, uh, it's not like, wow, who's, who's really gonna be writing this ticket to catch these people? How are you gonna catch them? To get it under control? Is, is, is it gonna be through the police department writing the ticket? Was it only the inspectors? Who's gonna be responsible for doing the ticket? Once you see somebody dumping garbage, if you do see them?
Trash collection is typically handled by our inspectors as far as enforcement.
Well, believe me, due to where you have a lack of, but don't even have enough inspectors now in so many ways to, to try to keep New Brunswick up to date, how are you really gonna be able to have time to do this? What, if a person has to call in so many times, ooh, about getting their gra, too, too high grass, what, rat, garbage, and all these other situations? I don't even find that the city's gonna even be able to handle this. And like I said, wow, New Brunswick has never been this filthy before as long as I lived here all my life, 44 years. And like I said, you're making a big mistake for keep putting city garbage cans all over due to where the litter is not really coming from. The people tossing, tossing, I told you for several years, is coming from every day on garbage day, recycling day, and people bringing their trash over here. But, wow, I say everything is being, so many things, I'm not gonna say everything, so many things is being done oppositely and causing so much more trouble. And like I said, I hope this work out, work out 'cause, believe me, I'm surely gonna keep my eyes open with videoing so many people due to where I do see it. But like I said, wow, will the inspectors be able to keep up with this? I don't think so. Thank you.
Madam President, we have no more members of the public on the list.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludwig.
Yes. We have no ordinances on first reading. We have Resolutions 1 through 44. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to the public comment on these resolutions only for up to five minutes per person. One time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a?
Yes, Madam President. If any members, give me one second, I'm sorry. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in 0704 will need to dial *6 to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T, and letters U through Z. Please dial *6 to unmute yourself if needed. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on the resolution. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Hello again, um, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I wanna start, uh, with a process, uh, problem here. I know normally, meetings would be in-person. You'd get a packet when you walk in the door with the resolutions in it. And I know during the, the pandemic, the remote meetings, they've had a agenda packet posted to the city website, and that's been done for every meeting I'm aware of, except this one. So, I wanna make sure that the text of the resolutions is gonna be posted to the website.
Ms. Zelladon, is, um, will that information be posted? Has it been posted?
Yes, Madam President. The information has been posted to the website. And, um, I viewed it myself. Um, so it was there at about, you know, probably before 3:00, but I can confirm at 3:00 PM, the council meeting packet was uploaded.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm on the website right now myself, and I'm not seeing it in the usual place. I hope you can look into it after the meeting. Can somebody tell me about Resolution 6, the corrective action plan? Um, I would really like, uh, to learn more about what was identified as needing to be corrected in the audit.
Uh, I can tell you, there were, there were very few things that, uh, needed corrective action. One was that, um, construction permits issued. The fees did not agree with the approved fee in the ordinance on, on file with the city. And that has been corrected as of September 28th. And then, there was, um, an issue with construction permits in regard to solar energy equipment. And they couldn't find an ordinance that had that language in it as well. Um, the recommendation was to include that. That corrective action did go through on October 13th. And then, there was an analysis of payroll deductions. Um, there were excess amounts in the pension accounts. Um, the city reviewed that, and the funds were transferred back to the current fund. Everything was reviewed, and that implementation date was September 23rd of 2021. Those were the corrective actions that were recommended and what was taken.
Okay. Um, thank you. I do want to, uh, remark on the Memorial Stadium, obviously damaged in the storm. I'm glad that, you know, it's been, been repaired. Um, but I wish that the city would, um, you know, show the same commitment to the residents who were flooded out of their home just, uh, across the street there at 29 Charles Street. Um, Food Truck Festival, Item 27. I think it's a nice thing that the city's gonna have a food truck festival, but I can't help but remark that just, uh, a few years ago, we had a, a food truck destination here in New Brunswick that got ran out of town, um, by Devco's developments. And, uh, you know, of course, I'm talking about the grease trucks. And, you know, there were, there was a right way to approach that that could have, um, you know, preserved a destination, uh, in New Brunswick. But instead, we had empty promises that they were gonna, uh, be saved and, you know, improved. And, uh, now I, I think it's pretty hard to find a food truck around New Brunswick just at the same time that nationally, these are becoming such a big, uh, popular thing. New Brunswick has run most of our food trucks out of business, um, through, uh, you know, the misguided redevelopment regime. Um, 37 shuttle buses, uh, can anybody tell me which shuttle buses these are? And is it true that the New Brunswick Quick Shuttle for the 5th and 6th Wards has been, um, you know, suspended indefinitely?
Is, I believe these are the shuttle buses that run through the senior center. Is Ms. Ford on the line? Can she explain more about this? Is Ms. Ford on the line?
Council President, I think this, I think Mr. Dominguez can, can, uh, assist us.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, if you wouldn't mind assisting us with this?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, these are the, um, the same citywide shuttles, uh, that Mr. Cradaville is speaking about. The, uh, they are shared services arrangement with the County of Middlesex. They have been suspended since COVID. This is to allow us to pay, uh, last year's city portion prior to, uh, their suspension before, uh, the pandemic.
So, they're gonna remain suspended?
It's indefinite during the pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez, for your help. Who's next on the list? Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Ms. Moore, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, well, first I will say, it's good to see that the stadium is, uh, redone. I know the city did put it $15,000 towards the lights, uh, at the last meeting we had. But it seems to me where I would like to understand due to where, why basically if you pay, pay all this much money for the, for the stadium to have things, due to where only the New Brunswick varsity team is allowed to use the scoreboard when playing a game? It, the, uh, the recreational Raiders, the, the Zebra JV, JV football team? Can you please tell me why that they're, they're not allowed to use, use it?
I'm, I'm not sure why. That's more of a, a board of education issue. But the, the field had to be repaired regardless of who's gonna use it because it was an issue of safety and concern with mold and water that was trapped within the turf field. And so, it had to be cleaned and restructured. It wasn't something that could sit there. And even if one team uses the field, it needed to be repaired for, for.
I, I understand you on that. But like I said, due to where, how, uh, due to where it's been taking away from the en, the entertainment of the games due to where, how, for some reason, where the players aren't even, no, no, the, the team aren't even able to use the scoreboard to keep up with the count, the scoreboard? Please, I honestly even asked Ms. Cheryl on it due to where, like I said, due to where she's there with the, Ms. Cheryl Smith, due to where she's the witness, due to where I asked her over, over the weeks. Please tell me why, why nothing's able to be used? But I hope to see after so much money being paid for up there that, wow, we can't have better games due to where using our scoreboard and the lights as well. I will, I will move, I will move on.
Council President.
To, to, uh. Uh, Mr. Jones, actually, I, I, I'm not gonna waste my time. I rather, I, I made my speech. I'm just gonna continue. I'm not gonna let you use up my five minutes, please. Thank you. May, may, uh, ask about four, please, nine, uh, what this is about, what if you're sober or get pulled over? You're receiving a grant for $9,000?
Yeah, this is a program that we, that we're involved with every year, and it's run from December through January, certain dates. We get federal funding for it, and it's to raise awareness on drunk driving. We usually put the signs out, and this covers the overtime that is, um, accumulated because of that initiative.
I will move on. Well, okay, one comment that I'm surely gonna make on this due to where I witnessed, and I left a message for Captain Miller maybe about four weeks ago, due to where, wow, when your officer has a mask on while involving, involving someone drinking, where while you witnessed someone pouring out their liquor, even though it was a minor accident, where you witnessed people, not just me, other people witnessed that the driver pouring out their liquor before the police officers arrive on top, on, on the scene? Wow, please, tell the officers to do their job. At least check, investigate to see whether the, the people are dr, drinking. Test, please, 'cause I have it on video right in front of what, Dela, uh, Delavan Street and Livingston Avenue. It was a minor accident, but yes, due to where we all witnessed the man pouring his liquor out. And what, the officer, a nasty one that doesn't like me? Why would he take the time to listen to anyone over that way because he saw me? So, please, you, you're receiving the money. Please tell your officers to make sure they do the test where people were drinking and driving because it's extremely too much going on. Thank you. And then, my last one, that's with number nine and 10. I see a lot of money going towards the Department of Public Works. It's good to see certain things being done, but like I said, wow, over, if you can afford over 400, almost $400,000, excuse me, uh, uh, $300,000, please, what are you gonna give the workers? A raise? Come on, due to where what? Just to get in a place to stay in New Brunswick? What, even though I, I was able to afford $1,645 for a two-bedroom? But wow, just to qualify in New Brunswick? What, you have to make almost $72,000 just to get a place? Come on, it's outrageous. Like I said, when are you gonna give the workers a raise? All this that you're paying?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Your time has expired. I will address the issue with, with these two vehicles. They are replacing old vehicles. The old vehicles will be liquidated. And the vehicles we're replacing, or the equipment we're replacing, um, I believe that it's passed its useful life of, uh, just approaching 20 years. So, that is the, uh, situation with those two things. Do we have anyone else on the list?
Can we hear now from the, uh, president?
This is Keith Jones. This is Keith Jones. Just wanted to clear up the confusion on the score, on the scoreboard. Uh, so we, we talked to, my office received, uh, several calls this week regarding the scoreboard. Uh, the confusion was that the controller was, is provided to any, uh, athletic program that it's using, uh, the scoreboard. The Raiders made a, a in-house, uh, judgment call on using the scoreboard because the, uh, and not using the scoreboard because the refs had the scores on their, uh, their notebooks and on their watches. The coaches both had scoreboards, and it was a lot of rain, and they didn't want anybody up in the booth. So, that was the reason why the scoreboard wasn't used. The scoreboard works fine. It was just an internal decision made by the organization not to use the scoreboard for that, for that purpose, for that something.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate the explanation. And was there someone else who's been trying to, to break through? Was it somebody from council? Okay, I'm gonna proceed then. The, uh, the cell will move the resolutions.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludwig.
Yes. Now, we have items for discussion by the council. I want to address a few things. First, at the last meeting, um, Ms. Kerber made a statement that she didn't know why she should be speaking to us because nobody ever does anything. It was in regard to an issue with the sewer vent overflow. And I, I just do wanna say that, um, in fact, that it was taken care of prior to her calling in. And when she made the call and the inspectors were made.
were made aware of it, the subcode official was there immediately. He took care of the issue. He addressed it with the landlord. The landlord was cooperative and did, uh, remedy the situation to the satisfaction of the subcode official. And the insector also did go to the house and make sure there was no, um, problem for the tenants, no health-related issues and no violations within the house, as well as the fact that the health department did go out there initially with our subcode official and there was no danger to the public as it was a contained situation. So I just wanted to, to let her know and the public know that we do take these things seriously. I followed, followed up on it the next morning separately from Mr. Drew as our administrator and then we both had the same notes in the afternoon. So that, that issue was addressed. Next, I just wanted to make a couple of public service announcements. Um, Sunday at eleven, Mercado Esperanza is hosting a family-friendly market at War Memorial Park. There'll be food, drinks, activities, performances and dedication of a new mural. This Sunday from ten to two, they're gonna, they're going to be, uh, pumpkin, pumpkin picking and activities for families at the youth sports complex. Free pumpkins while the supplies last and there'll be crafts and games and face painting for children. Um, I do wanna let everybody know, early voting begins this Saturday and runs through the following Sunday, the thirty-first. I'm mentioning this because the New Brunswick Public Library is one of the facilities in the county that will be open for early in-person voting. The hours are Saturday, Monday through Saturday, ten to eight, and Sunday, ten to six. Then, um, as mentioned in the resolutions, the Food Truck Festival is rescheduled to November seventh at twelve PM and I know we have a m- meeting in between, but the Veterans Day Parade is, is on this year. Um, that will be November eleventh, beginning at eleven-thirty. It's harvest weekend downtown. Um, they're gonna be featuring live music, activities, brunch specials, dog, dog-friendly events. Um, that begins on Thursday. On Friday, they're doing a domestic violence mural, um, at Livingston and Liberty and the public is invited to go Friday afternoon, um, and participate in that and that will culminate with the march on Saturday. And then, an update on the body cam equipment, um, that is starting to come in. Training is slated to begin in November and December and they're expecting some officers at this point, um, to be on the streets before the end of the year with that equipment in use. Those are the updates that I had today. Um, Vice President, yes?
Who was that? Okay, uh, Vice President, um, Council Vice President Escobar, do you have any comments?
No, no comments. You cover some other things that I was gonna say, especially about the domestic, the annual domestic violence, um, awareness march on Saturday, but, um, you covered that. So thank you. I just need to, just to let you know, I need to sign out 'cause I have another meeting. So, um, just to have, everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Anderson, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, yes, just like to wish everybody a very safe and a happy Halloween if you're out trick-or-treating, um, or taking advantage of the trunk-or-treats, especially behind City Hall. Like to thank Mr. Keith Jones and Joseph Johnson with their heroes banners, uh, that are, that are doing well for those that were in wars, uh, past and they should be up. Uh, now I believe they are and ceremony around November eleventh. Also like to congratulate the two members of the, uh, Board of Education who are leaving, especially Mr. Patty Selby Siedowski for her twenty-four years on the Board of Ed. And a reminder again, November second, uh, to please vote or vote earlier as the, uh, Council President had indicated before. Thank you.
Yes, and that just bring me to a point. Before I get to you, Mr. Egan, I, I failed to mention, um, reiterate that there is a City Halloween on Sunday, um, the thirty-first behind City Hall and you're, um, it would be good to wear masks and social distance, but enjoy the day there. And now Councilman Egan, do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director Rawls, are you available for an OEM update?
Madam President, this is Sergeant Lemerling. Uh, I'll be covering the, uh, update tonight if that's okay.
Of course. Thank you.
All right. So, um, while COVID cases continue to fall after the late summer surge, vaccinations continue to be a, a priority. Uh, as we begin to enter the colder months of the year, boosters are suggested for several populations. Uh, more specifically, people who are sixty-five years older, uh, and older, or who are living in long-term care settings should get a Pfizer booster at least six months after their second Pfizer shot. People who are fifty to sixty-four with underlying medical conditions should get a Pfizer booster at least six months after their second Pfizer, Pfizer shot. People who are ages eighteen to forty-nine, uh, years with underlying medical conditions may get a Pfizer booster at least six months after their second shot and should consider their individual risks and benefits. And then people who are eighteen to sixty-four years of age, uh, who are increased risk of COVID-nineteen exposure and transmission because of where they work, uh, they may get a, a Pfizer booster shot at least six months after their second shot and should consider their individual risks and benefits. Um, with, uh, the winter season coming around and I know everybody's concerned about the, uh, COVID-nineteen, we also have to remember that flu season is upon us and that is still, uh, a risk as well. So we also encourage everyone to get your regular, um, flu shot as well. So for booster guidance for J and J and Moderna vaccine, it's forthcoming. We'll be keeping an eye on that. We'll be bringing updates on that at the next meeting if we have any information on that. Uh, free vaccination and free COVID testing continue to be widely available and for vaccination locations, um, just go on the website, covidnineteen nj.gov and, uh, you can find all the information there. Uh, we will continue to share vaccination and testing opportunities in New Brunswick on the community calendar section of the city website at thecityofnewbrunswick.org. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll move into the public portion of the meeting. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any member of the public wishes to address the council, please state your name and the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Joyce Matey, I wanted to say. Joyce Matey.
Joyce Matey, okay. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? Please dial star six to unmute yourself. This will be the last call, A through Z. Okay, the list is now closed. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Hello again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. First question, uh, for the, the Police Department, um, how many, if any, body-worn cameras have been deployed? I still have yet to see a New Brunswick officer wearing one.
I just gave an update when I was doing my comments. None have been deployed yet. The equipment is just coming in.
Okay. Um, just to reiterate that the law is being violated. There was a deadline for officers on patrol to be equipped with this mandatory part of the uniform and that deadline was June the first. So we're now in October and out of compliance with the state law. Um, the Make It Count Program.
Did you address that with the Attorney?
I did, yeah. I, I did raise it to the Attorney General. Yeah, I did. So, moving on to Make. Yeah, I've been in touch with them. So moving on, the, the Make It Count Program, um, I learned that perhaps some of the monies that have been donated are finally being put to use. Can I get some details on which organizations or projects or the beneficiaries of the, these funds? Is it true that the funds are finally being dispersed?
I don't have that information with me. I can get it for you or I can ask Mr. Jones to reach out to you and give you that information.
Great. I would, I would really appreciate it. Can you just tell me, is it true that the, the money is being put to use now or, or is it still just sitting in an account?
I, I'm not terribly sure, but I will get back to you tomorrow on it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I do wanna ask about when you think you might resume in-person meetings?
Uh, you know, it's become more or less a, uh, two-week by two-week process at this point, but there are still things we're looking at. There's still regulations coming down between the state and OSHA and, um, so, you know, we're doing our best to make sure that we're gonna be in accordance with everything and with the safety of everybody else in public. And you will have, the public will have plenty notification when we're gonna be back in po- in, uh, per- person.
Okay. Uh, I do wanna, you know, reiterate my, my preference that the city reach out to the county and book the, uh, you know, fantastic public meeting room right across the street from City Hall. Um, it's designed for public meetings and, um, certainly can accommodate, uh, larger crowd, more distance than the City Hall building. And, um, you know, I know you mentioned that, uh, it was unavailable due to a conflict, but I've done some research and I've yet to find any, um, Wednesday night where the meeting room wasn't available. Um, as you know, the, the county commissioners use the meeting room on Thursdays. Um, can you elaborate on who told you that the, that the meeting room would be unavailable or, or what their, their, uh, um, you know, reason was that it wouldn't be available? Because I think you may wanna go back and check again.
Well, we can take your comments under advisement and check into it again.
Okay. Um, I, I wanna, uh, ask about Twenty-Nine Charles Street. Um, you know, what's been done for the residents there? I spoke to some of them who were very concerned they were being kicked out of their, their longtime home and given, you know, uh, four nights in a hotel and essentially on their own after that. And these are folks that are, um, you know, living in, in deed-restricted, affordable housing that the Borai Development Corporation specifically made deed restricted to make up for their prior broken promises to provide affordable housing in downtown New Brunswick. And of course, this building has consistently suffered flooding. Um, any update on what's been done, if anything, to help those residents? Has the city been assisting any of the, the, the folks who lost their homes in that particular building?
Yeah, I, I am gonna say this. There was much more done than just the four nights stay and this is an important issue. I'm gonna ask Mr. Dominguez if you could please give us an update on what's going on on Charles Street and exactly what the city do, did and is continuing to do to help those residents that were affected by the storm.
Certainly, Council President. Um, in the aftermath of Hurricane Ida or, uh, the remnants thereof, uh, the residents of Twenty-Nine Charles Street, uh, were relocated to the Red Carpet Inn, uh, under the city's relocation program. Uh, the city and my staff, uh, spent significant efforts, uh, beyond what is normally undertaken during, uh, the relocation program to, uh, to ensure that they could find, uh, alternate housing, alternate permanent housing. Uh, at the time, uh, of, uh, last check, uh, five of the eight families have found alternative lodging, uh, and the, I believe, three families still remain at the, uh, at the Red Carpet Inn at this time. And we continue to work with them to, uh, find, uh, find permanent lodging as we, uh, pound the pavement on their behalf and follow up with them on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Uh, thanks, Mr. Cradaville, for your comments. Your time has expired. Who's next on the list? Madam Clerk?
Madam President, I have a Joyce Matey.
Yes, hi.
Thank you. Ms. Matey, can you please, can you please state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record?
My name is Joyce Matey, M-A-D-E-E. I live on Richmond Street in New Brunswick.
Thank you, Ms. Matey. Um, go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, it has to do with, um, excessive noise. I've lived in New Brunswick for several years in a, in an apartment building and I spoke to Sergeant Lemerling actually, uh, a while ago and I suggested perhaps, I heard something that New York is doing and he thought perhaps, uh, I should bring this up in terms of, uh, and I'm not that familiar with what actually you do do, other than it's very difficult, for instance, in terms of cars. I'm talking specifically the booming music as well as, I guess, this altered mufflers. Um, it's really, really, really disruptive, uh, mentally, physically. Um, it's a real thing, noise pollution. And, um, I heard that in New York, there, uh, I don't know if anybody else is familiar with this, but there's a tool that you can attach to their red light system, which is like a traffic light kinda thing, that can take pictures and, uh, kinda send out, um, actually, um, you know, a ticket or, you know, to a person who's, um, you know, violating a noise ordinance. And I was just wondering if there's anything we can do to kinda help with this situation. It's very difficult, I understand, for police to kinda go after people who are violating the noise ordinance. By the time you call them, it's hard to get them, number one, and number two, there's just, you know, not that many, as many police as we would like to be able to do this. So it's a legitimate concern and I was wondering, you know, this sounds like a great tool. I don't know, you know, if you have the finances for it. I know there used to be something where you would go, if you went through a red light, you would kinda, you know, there was a camera system with that, I believe was shut down. Is there any kind of response to that question?
Well, it was, that's, I, I, um, your concern is valid. I mean, noise pollution is an issue and I agree with you on a lot of those points. As far as what we could do, like just attaching a camera, it's a little bit more complicated than that, but I will have the conversation, um, with our administrator and with our attorney and just, um, go through and see if there's anything more that we can do and look into what you stated. As you are probably aware, everything from state to state is different as far as laws go, but I will certainly address your concerns and we do take them seriously.
Well, when you say you take them seriously, um, so if there is an ordinance, how would I personally find out, you know, what that ordinance is and, and how you do enforce it? Because it's nice to say that you, you know, but nothing really is done. I've lived here for years. It's gotten way worse. Uh, I live on top of a bank. These people in, like literally in the middle of the night, so idle their cars. Something has to be done. You can't just say, well, you know, it, it varies from state to state. That's not acceptable. Something needs to be done.
I, I didn't say the issue varies from state to state, Ms. I said that the laws and what we're allowed to vary from state to state and just because New York, just because New York has the tool that they can use doesn't mean that New Jersey has a tool that we can use as well. And it's, uh, the police do do their jobs. They need to be called. It's an enforcement issue. It's an enforcement issue.
I understand that, but there might be other tools and that's why. I, I understand it's not that easy. I totally understand. That's why I'm calling in. I, it might be a financial thing, whatever, but I, I would appreciate if it was seriously considered or how I personally could, um, you know, just understand and talk to people who would be considering this. That's all. That's all I'm asking. I know it's difficult. I'm not saying it's easy.
No, and I didn't mean that, that it was difficult for us. I told you, it was something that I will sit down and talk to, um, people about in the city. But those were my words. So when we have that conversation, I can reach back at you if you wanna leave your name with the city clerk and I can, you know, tell you the information I gathered. You can look at our ordinances up online. Um, all of our ordinances are on the city website, so they're available to you if you'd like to see them. And use the reported app for now and, and call. I hate to keep saying that. I don't mean, I'm not trying to slight you and I know sometimes things aren't done, but if we still follow that process, maybe we can target certain areas, um, with enforcement at certain times. So I can speak to the Police Department about that as well. So, I can speak to the police department about that as well.
That would be great. Now, you say the city clerk. Is that something I would just call in and give them my name? I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, you can just call the city clerk in the morning, give her your name, and then I'll reach out through that platform to get back in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. Much appreciated.
Would it be okay if the city clerk gave the information so that Ms. Matey can call?
Of course.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Matey, the telephone number where you can reach me tomorrow Or you can email me at cityclerk@cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Who's next on the list?
We have Ms. Moore, Madam President.
Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Well, first I'd like to start off... I will agree with Ms. Matey, and if I pronounce her name right, due to where, yes, you do have these extreme loud cars, due to where I had talked to Captain Bobadilla before, and yes, due to where he did help me out with calming down the noise over here somewhat on Somerset Street. But due to where, extremely due to where some of them cars, they sound, when they backfire, they sound like gunshots. Wow, you're walking on the road, and that does it. Wow, you can give someone a heart attack. It is against the law for those to be that loud. But like I said, is the police department doing their job on that as well? No, they're not. And it's very sad to see so many things going on where the police department should be making it better with the salary that they're being paid. I would like to start off with my hazard, my vision, due to where, please, I advise you to fix the light on Joyce Comer and Sanford Streets, due to where that is a blind zone with turning, and due to where that light is out, you can barely, you can't even see a pedestrian crossing at Joyce Comer and Sanford. Please, have it fixed immediately. Thank you. I will also say, I'm not sure of the name of this street. It's along the Railroad Avenue, not by, but by Handy Street. But if you make that turn to go through Walgreens, please, due to where with the construction workers putting their, there's trucks over there. You're going to have a head-on collision, due to where one car is turning quickly from the other one. There's no longer two lane over there. So, I advise the city and the police department to look in, whether they're going to close that road off. But with all of that equipment over there, that's going to cause a major crash over there as these vehicles are turning the same way, due to where over there on Railroad, where it says no through traffic already, but how the traffic is still allowed to go through there off of Handy Street to go around the other way to go through Walgreens. Then I would like to say, please, I think it's time for the city council to step up and do their job, and mayor do their job, raise the price $15 an hour for crossing guards, due to where we need more crossing guards. Every since the shooting on Joyce Comer and Comstock, not a crossing guard over there, not a crossing guard on French or Byard Street. What, we need plenty more. Come on, stop paying the ones that are sitting on their rear end more money than where the money needs to go to the ones who are working and risking their lives doing things. Think about it, please. I'm asking for a speed bump on Lee Avenue between Comstock and Delavan, due to where you did have a minor motor vehicle accident over there last Tuesday. I thank you, Mr. Cradaville, for the information, due to where, yes, like I said, something's going to have to be done. I thank the police department for their attention that they're getting over there to see Delavan finally closed off. But please, time for us, no speed bump over there on Lee Avenue, right there, to slow the traffic down. I will say, hope to say, some of this money that's going through goes towards the homeless. Wow, you still have over 30 people living in tents right on a construction site on 50 Jersey Avenue. Still haven't been removed or helped from over there. How are they allowed to, when you stay over there? But wow, you bother other homeless victims in the parks and other locations. Wow, New Brunswick has never been this like homeless, having so many homeless. And I think the city needs to step up and start taking action with trying to help people instead of, like I said, putting money towards people who are sitting on their rear end. It's very sad. I will also just say, my last thing, thank you, Mr. Charlie Cradaville, last night, where really speaking up for me at the Board of Education meeting last night, what a horrible thing, and believe me, every evil dog, I have their day. Dr. Caldwell, Dr. Johnson, and those two security guards, who, wow, know for the past three years that I cannot sit down at a meeting. I've been standing, I stand in every meeting, city council, county, and the board, where they tried to come at me, threaten me, oh, just because I can't, wouldn't sit down, and I would have to leave the auditorium? Oh, I tell you, they were half their day, and I will say my prayers that they felt every bit of pain where they came at me and I moved the wrong way after having a procedure done on my back last week. Like I said, every evil dog, and I will say, you will feel the pain. No worries, I will go to the Board of Education meetings anytime soon for you to disrespect with someone who cannot sit down. You will, they will feel the pain, and the longer I stay from going into a meeting, the longer they will suffer, and I'm not ashamed to say, I'm going to pray that they feel what it's like, the way they did me, where Mr. Cradaville spoke up for me and he recorded. Wow!
Thank you, Ms. Moore. It expired. That concludes the public comment portion and the business for our agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Hello?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council President Sycorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.